Did you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Bingham?
I just wanted to see if anyone else was going to jump up first. I want to present this to the city and zoning commission. Jake was present at that meeting. I had, as we read through the agenda, I mentioned that there's two items there I didn't think pertained to. One was the seven-foot fence that went around the property. And the reason being on that, we're planning on putting the scrapyard on the northeast corner in the processing of the ferrous metals. And the building blocks and obscures anything visible from the south. And the reason I hesitate on that is because there's nothing really to see except perhaps the highway. And I'm not opposed to putting a fence on the east part of that. But go clear around the property, I don't see the need for that. If you wanted to study that, I would welcome to you that. The other thing I didn't jump on with agreement with is the undercarriage mud wash. I don't see a need for that because we're not in the same situation we had before. There's a lot of gravel and also asphalt. And a whole different, it's a whole different ballpark of what we're up against there. To enforce that, then I would say let's enforce that with the neighbors that are around there, the other trucking companies, the coal trucks, because they're going to track more mud than we do, which is probably nil to none. Because, like I said, it's a whole different atmosphere in this location than where we're presently located.
We can, we can take those into consideration, but I believe that it would have to go back through planning and zoning.
We discussed this, and I, when they okayed it, I was holding back on that. When they okayed it, I assumed that they were okaying it with those two items to be pulled back off.
We actually, since I sit on planning and zoning commission, I'd like to correct you there, that we made it very clear that these were the conditions without any variance.
I would like to go back and listen to the recording.
That would be fine, we can provide that to you. It was obvious-
Well, that's what I heard, is what I heard, so maybe we can-
If you're looking for an exception to what the planning commission approved, like Commissioner Potter said, that would be an additional process.
So we can, we can take the hearing tonight and, you know, approve or disapprove as is, but as far as any changes on that recommendation, we'd need to go back through them.
I don't know why you'd want to encumber and inhibit a business that provides the income level that we provide to the community.
We would just want to hold you to the same regulations that all businesses are being held to here in the county.
No, they're not. You tell me how many people in the county, in Emery County, have truck washing, undercarriage washing.
Any businesses that go through the process to get a new conditional use permit are following these exact requirements. It's code.
Are we on recording right now?
On YouTube, live.
Good. I would like the county to know, because through the grapevine, the county continues to punish and obstruct businesses in coming into the community. And that's, that's the word on the street. And I think this is a fair example of that.
It is a public hearing, you can make your statements as you wish.
Is there anything else you'd like to add for the record, Mr. Bingham?
No, so are we done until we go back through ground zero again?
We need to finish this public hearing and take a vote on this, and then if this document stands and passes tonight, any other changes you'd need to take back through planning and zoning.
So you can do it now, or are you going to do it at the end of the agenda?
We'll do it at the end of the public hearing.
We have to allow anyone else who wants to come to the microphone.
Okay, I see.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter? Okay. Seeing no one else coming up, we'll go ahead and close this session then at 4:43. And commissioners, at this point in time, we need, can take a motion as to how to proceed with the conditional use permit.
Commissioners, my recommendation would be that we follow the planning and zoning's recommendation to pass this conditional use permit as it stands, without allowing any, any variance or waiver of the requirements.
I have some questions on the tire washing.
Would you like Todd to answer those, or?
Yeah.
Which number are you looking at, Commissioner?
I'm trying to find it, which-
Is it the-
Number thirteen.
Thirteen. Yeah, how many, is this something that we're going to require of all new trucking-type businesses in the county?
The way we, we have-
I see this just being as a little bit burdensome. The side obscuring fence, I have no heartache with, because of the type of business. But the installing of the truck off-wash mud wash stations, depending on the location and their ability to track mud onto the roads, if they can mitigate that through gravel or other things, are there other things that can be better used to mitigate the tracking problem than causing? I just see this as a large expense to a business.
I see, and I understand that. The way I see it, install a location for trucks to off-track mud or install tire wash. So if he has a location, like he was saying, he has enough gravel and asphalt to off-track that mud where it doesn't travel onto the county road, he wouldn't be required to install a tire wash. We just didn't want that material to be on there, because previous locations or other locations, you might not have enough area to, to off-track enough mud. So a solution to that would be to put in a tire wash, but if you can get that mud off and keep it on your property before you get it on the county road, that's all we're looking to do, so-
Or have their travel paths that are gravelled.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So needs to off-track, and/or if he's not able to off-track, have a tire wash so that mud does not get on the roadway. That's what we're looking at, is to mitigate-
That's a good clarification. I thought, I thought it was install a tire wash.
No, it's or install a tire wash, depending on how he has it set up with the material to get the mud off. So if he has sufficient gravel and roadway to keep it off, then that's fine.
I'm guessing the primary concern with the salvage yard is that that off-tracking of mud could possibly bring the metals and so forth out, that in the past, in other, all locations, we've had concerns with flat tires and, and public comment in that regards.
Yes.
But that would take care of that kind of a situation.
Yes.
Flat, flat tires, mud on the road, gravel on the road.
So the other question that Commissioner Hopes asked, that I'm not sure he answered, was, is this within our building codes, our permitting codes, as far as all future truck yards are going to have to have that in their-
It's something to do with the conditional use permit, that if it could potentially cause a problem, if they're in a, in an industry where that tracking of mud is an issue, yes, that can be listed in their conditional use permit. Some businesses may not have the issue of tracking of mud, and therefore wouldn't need to be listed, but businesses where heavy trucks are coming on and off, we want to keep the roadway, roadway clear.
It's fairly common, even in new construction areas, that they, they create a off-tracking pad for trucks coming on and off.
And that, that same measure would suffice for this?
Yeah. So based on the type of business that comes in, yes, that could be a condition if it's a way to mitigate the problem.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
So with the clarification, I'll step down, or, I don't even have to step down.
No, just second that.
Motion.
Is there any other, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussions? All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we've cleared up that one point, and if you'd like to visit the other point, get with Todd, and let's, let's go through that process and see.
I think there's some other solutions besides installing a very expensive car wash, or tire wash station. Some gravel beds.
I agree, even another area where cars are going to walk through, there's not-
Yeah.
Okay. Just so long as you can mitigate the off-tracking, that's all we're asking.
Yeah, if you're going to do a concrete pad over there, that, that's a location where that potentially could suffice.
Thank you. Our next item then is review and possible approval of a contract with the Department of Human Services for the provision of mental health services to youth and families. And we'll turn the time over to you, Karen.
Hi, so I'm here for signature for a contract between the Department of Human Services and Four Corners. We have always served DCFS kids and families, but we've had to have kind of an onerous purchase service agreement that took some time and took approval. So we're here, this contract says that we basically can serve kids that are under DCFS custody quickly. And so it basically kind of outlines how, what we'll serve them with, and how, and how we'll collect data, and how it'll kind of go together. So I'm here for electronic signature, if you have that.
Electronic signature?
Yes. So they, they've sent me like five emails a day for DocuSign. If you don't, I have a physical copy, but they're trying to go electronic.
If you would send that to me, or to us.
Okay, did we, I don't know if it, did it-
I don't, I don't know that any of us have received that.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, she was going to call you today. Well, I have a physical copy too, so.
Talk, talk about dollar amounts with this, any other matching monies, commitments that-
So the match comes from DCFS, or the Department of Human Services, so the county isn't on the hook for the match. This is a carve-out group of kids.
Right.
We're on the hook for inpatient psychiatric, so within our capitated rate, inpatient psychiatric comes with that. So it's in our best interest to keep kids really stable and out of more expensive residential and psychiatric inpatient facilities.
So if someone were to say that there's a match to this, it would be your services that is providing?
So our services, so with Medicaid, federal pays seventy, and then state and county do a combination of the other thirty. But with this match, the Department of Human Services pays the match.
Gotcha.
Because it's a special carve-out population.
So is this money upfront, or is this paid for on a-
Fee for service.
Each service, that's, that's how I understood it.
Yep, so it's a fee for service, so as we provide services, then we bill them.
Then we bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other, the other question that I had in regards to the contract was, as far as compliance with applicable laws, some of those I've not seen in your other contracts. Are you set up to administer and take care of those compliance issues, Karen?
Yes, yeah. So this is, this is written like a private provider contract, with a, like a private therapist. And because we're, yes, and so we've talked about a lot of those, we have a lot of oversight with the Division of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, and so they're willing to take that oversight as, in exchange for this contract, so, or use that as part of this contract. But you're right, it's written differently than-
Very differently than your previous contracts. And as far as the date, I'm not sure that I came up with a date on this contract, as far as how long it was going to be in effect. And maybe I missed that, that's what I was looking for here to ask you.
I think it's on signature. So when we get this signed by the counties, then, then we'll begin, begin the contract. So it's ongoing.
And you go to each county, correct, for this, these signatures?
Nope, just Carbon County, the lead county.
As the hosting, lead county, okay.
I can see on the back of our packet is the DocuSign document, but-
Oh, is it?
I've not seen it live, not that it would have come across, you know, my copies or my computer, but it probably just needs to be sent-
Okay.
-to a computer where we can do the, to one of our addresses where it can be done.
Okay, should I send that to Rita, and then, okay?
Is it the commission chair, or is it the commission on the board that needs to sign that?
The commission chair.
The commission chair, so you could probably just have it sent to his email then.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That'll be fine. So commissioners, we have this before us. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our next item, commissioners, is consideration and possible approval of a contract with Blackhawk Coal Company for land exchange. If you'll recall, in our last commission meeting, we did hold a public hearing in regards to this exchange, took into account the questions that were there, and I can take just a minute and report back on those with some further conversations. Really not having, or not opening the public hearing again tonight, but as I reviewed the contract and talked with the parties involved, both with Blackhawk and with the Marcellos and Davises, I think everybody, including the county, recognized the need for this project, so that we don't end up paying the state of Utah the equivalent of what the value is in five years, and then having that ongoing commitment. That emergency communications looks to be absolutely critical, the state's going to do it, or we can, you know, be participants in it. And so having talked with the parties, I, I see that we really need to go forward. It is that two-to-one exchange, but it gets us the property that we need, it also gets us out from underneath an old abandoned mine area. And so I think that, I think having had those opportunities, I think the two private landowners in that area can work out those other details.
And again, the purpose of this is so that we can get a communication tower, fellow service, Highway Six and 191, areas that are currently dead zones, and for emergency services and other purposes, it would be in our best interest to do this transaction.
Any other comments? We'll take a motion.
Motion to approve a contract with Blackhawk for exchange of properties.
And I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Next item is review and possible approval of amendment to our nepotism policy, Rose.
Commissioner's back in May. We received, all entities received an auditor alert from the state auditor, just asking us to make sure our nepotism policy was in compliance. We, there's some minor changes that have been made, and I will honestly say that Carbon County really follows the nepotism policy. I think we do a great job. Just some minor changes, just to make sure as public officials, you're not directly supervising. So on page thirty, Jake, do you see that? If you need to look at that.
Yeah.
Okay. Some wording needed to be changed, and just very, very minor changes to our policy, so.
I don't have any further questions.
The question that I had, Rose, in this slight change, excuse me, is that we're striking some things, but the new language, I felt, didn't impose a direct assault on any particular family, it's just a matter of, that's the policy of who this is. It didn't appear to be discriminatory in any way.
No, it isn't. And we actually, we follow the code, it's like fifty-two point three dash three.
Right.
And that's, you know, I have that, and we reference that all the time, and so.
And I know Christian was ill today, but have we had that final review with him?
We've had it with him and with Scott. Yeah. Actually, Scott's the one that made the changes, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is for you also, Rose, it's review and possible approval of amendments to our volunteer policy.
Yes, commissioners, Don Johnston, our safety director, as you know, we're going to be using some volunteers in different areas in the county, within the county. And so he actually reviewed it and made, and again, this has gone to legal, all it was mainly was taken up from RSVP, which we no longer have that department within the county, and that goes back to the HR department, so that we would be the one that would monitor it and, and follow it and track it, so. Just, actually, just changing from RSVP to HR.
Look, look forward to using that, as we've had a couple, couple volunteers already complete safety training and abiding by the county policies.
And they'll go through background checks, direct screens, physicals, just like a regular employee does, so.
It's very good.
If I might make a comment, I, I think this really opens up an opportunity for citizens here in the community to be more a part of the county government. An opportunity to really take some ownership of some of the facilities that we have, and some of the things that we do here locally, so.
I think it will be good, we'll try, Don will task train those employees, because that was one thing our insurance company made it imperative to me, is to make sure for the liability of the county, we don't want to just have a volunteer out there doing things that can get us or them in trouble. So there'll be regular task training that will go along with that. And I'm excited, I think it's good and it's beneficial, and it will help us in a lot of areas that we need volunteers for right now.
It'll open up opportunities that didn't exist before, it'll be great.
Thank you for your department taking that on.
Yeah, I'm happy to, so.
Commissioners, do we have a motion?
To approve, so moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a discussion with County Seat TV program representatives regarding possible upcoming show topics. Chad, I don't know if that's you, and if you want, if you want to state your name and introduce anybody else that's here with you, that'd be great.
At my right flank is Rick Peterson, who is our COO, our Operation Sky. My name's Chad Booth, and I'm sure all three of you know me, and hopefully some of the rest of you do as well. We have been traveling to the counties, trying to expand our knowledge base of issues that need to be dealt with. We also are wanting to inform counties of the changes that County Seat is in the process of taking on as we go into our eighth season of broadcasting on behalf of the counties of Utah. So that's what this presentation will be about, just a couple of minutes of a scorecard. County Seat took off last year. Somehow or another, it, it became a very popular topic. I don't know if people are just more in tune to politics than they've been in the past, or, or exactly what it was, but there are two audiences that I've always talked about being important. One of them, of course, is the general audience of the public across the state, understanding the importance of county government, what it does, because it's kind of a mysterious government. And more importantly, to try and bring to the Wasatch Front many of the rural issues that sometimes get overlooked, particularly when you gather that second audience on Capitol Hill. We've done really well with expanding the interest of both audiences. It is an interesting note to point out, as we were starting to do these meetings this fall, I'd asked Channel Four to compile some of their RennTrak rating numbers, just so we would have an update, because I haven't really, you know, I can't afford to sign up for RennTrak myself, it's like eleven thousand dollars a month, or some ridiculous figure like that. I'd have to raise the rates beyond reasonableness, but Channel Four's good when I pester them to send them forward to me. So they gave me the last several months, up through the time that I requested them. Very interesting to note that during the legislature, our audience jumped nearly thirty thousand homes per week. And the guy, when he said, "I don't know what you guys were doing in January, but something happened for about six weeks," well, your weekly numbers were just significantly, you know, up there. And I said, "Well, no, it's no secret to me, it's the legislature." So during that period of, that period of time through there, we saw a significant number. But then overall, the audience now will enjoy household participation. Our May average was like a hundred and three thousand households, which translate to roughly a couple hundred thousand viewers across the state, maybe even two fifty. So the show has gained some new fans, I guess is probably the easiest way to say it. We have planned to, and obviously, you know, we are broadcasting twice, I don't know if everybody, it came to surprise to me, that some commissioners don't know that we added Saturday night a couple of years ago, and we're able to do that with very little extra cost to the TV station. But we also are broadcasting on Carbon Emery Ten, VTV Six, and the U N A Basin, on Richfield Ten, KTTA, an independent station out of Monroe, also carries our show. On any given week, County Seat will air thirty-nine times across the state. And we're about to add one more, I believe, aren't we? So most of the cable operators, big and small, are rebroadcasting the show. It's carried on Southern Utah Live, out of Dixie, Dixie University or Dixie State. So the show is obviously just about any day, part any day can be found, and most of the numbers that I'm reflecting or referring to are merely the Channel Four numbers, so the audience is probably a bit broader than that, just based on when people say that they catch it. We are introducing something new in the beginning of this year, and we're actually ramping up for it right now. One of the things that County Seat set out to do was to create that long-form dialogue so people can really understand the issues. You know, if, if one of the Wasatch Front TV stations come down here and they, they talk to you, that story's going to be about a minute and a half. If you manage to get on Doug Wright Show for an interview, his average interview time is three minutes and eleven seconds. Rod Arquette runs about four. Red Meat Radio, which is a really conservative talk station, and probably has the longest format, they run about nine minutes. We take a single topic on County Seat, and we talk, we talk twenty-two and a half minutes on one single topic, which, as Senator Thatcher pointed out in one of our interviews on a, on a tape we presented, he said, "If you're going to talk about rural issues, you're going to talk about big issues, you can't do it on a bumper sticker, you need that time to have that conversation to get it right." And so we, we're pleased that we've been able to do that. But the one thing that we've missed is the beginning of that conversation. When something breaks, when news is just starting, when, when the announcement comes out, before all these different people put their spin on it, the counties find themselves responding to something, is getting that message out there first. So we have actually invested in building a studio that's onsite in our office, it's not as big as the one that we use to broadcast from, and, and we have set it up so that within ten minutes of a phone call, if you come out of a meeting with the BLM and they make some large concession and they agree to something, before somebody else can tell the story, you can contact us, we'll review it with you, and we'll have it on the air. We will even have the capacity, if you've got your cell phone with you, of doing a live interview with you and have it up on, on the air as, as news is breaking. So we've, we've invested to make that happen, we've been test-driving it. In fact, we just did one earlier today on, on sage grouse planting, because they're going into scoping, and we wanted people to have the maximum amount of time to participate in the scoping processes, they look at following Secretary Zinke's recommendations to go back and revisit how they decided to manage sage grouse, so. Anyway, we're going to be providing that in the coming season, that will not be at any change of price, we believe we can actually absorb it as long as we can keep our participation up. So that covers the reporting of things that I wanted to talk to you about today, and the rest of it is, I want to hear from you, because I need to know what kind of topics we should be talking about, and so I have a bunch of blank yellow cards here, and I would love to hear if there are issues that you think there should be a half-hour conversation before the state of Utah coming up, that would be important to Carbon County.
Commissioners, anything you'd like to share?
Well, if you could highlight some items in the future, one of which would be to finish with San Juan County, so that we have that documentary on opioid abuse, well, intergenerational poverty.
Intergenerational, right.
Yes, sorry, that was another item-
Already did the opioid one.
Yes. So intergenerational poverty, to get that out.
Yeah.
Another item going forward, maybe the state income tax incentive bill that Senator Okerlund is going to be running this next legislative session. He, he just, I believe, was getting ready to file it on Monday.
Making a note?
I think some of the best benefit that, that I've seen is, is some of the things that you've already covered, the educational pieces on, say, for example, centrally assessed properties, public lands issues, wild horse in burrow, sage grouse, continuing to educate on those issues and how they affect counties. I think you're already on point, I don't have any specific ones today, but that continuing it, maybe reaffirming some of those, PLI, any, any of those topics that could strengthen or bolster the education-
We, we are currently working on a side project with the Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office to produce some offline content for County Seat. We finished the first one on wild horse in burrow, but there, have you ever seen a PragerU video before, any of you guys?
I have not.
I will, I will recommend them as something to take complex issues and explain them to people who generally aren't interested. And, and we've kind of, well, I don't want to say we've hijacked PragerU, but we've seen the value of that kind of presentation, and we actually produced one on RS-2477 roads for Kane County, and we just finished another one on wild horse in burrow, that they actually took back to Washington with them, and said it was very successful in their testimony before the different appropriations and oversight committees as far as the wild horse issue in the western desert. and oversight committees as far as the wild horse issue in the western desert. I know that forest management is another one, and that they would like to do, and I believe they have one that they would like to cover on energy, which gets me back to the next point. We have tried for several years to get a show put together where we can follow coal from the mine face to the smoke stack, and talk about the role coal plays in baseload power production, and how much has been done to make that energy clean. Because I am convinced that people don't understand what they are seeing when they drive past a power plant. And I don't think they understand the situat, how far coal has come, or some of the breaking technologies. And I'd like to visually be able to follow that through in a story. But our, our two biggest stumbling blocks is Rocky Mountain Power, and getting into a coal mine to get those first pictures. And for some reason, I, they're just terrified that we're going to turn this into like a, an eco-doc or something like that. And I just really want to tell the story, because I think it's a remarkable story that really needs to be told. So, if you can help us get those two hurdles covered, I would be very grateful.
Another fact that you can add to that is, the only pollution that they're really able to start cracking down on power plants right now is the CO2.
Hey.
Because they've, they've done emissions on the rest of those. But as you look at the CO2 emissions in the country, as, as to power production, CO2 from gas-fired power plants is starting to edge above that, that is released by coal-fired power plants. And they're not, I just want the, the playing field to be equal, or even. You know, the coal fire has, has cleaned up all of the rest of the emissions that were asked, but now you're allowing another energy source, which is a great energy source. I think it has to be used in our portfolio. But if you're going to regulate one on CO2, the other one needs to be regulated as well, or you just say it's a natural?
For the record, Casey, I think it's interesting to note that you just expelled over a liter of CO2 to explain that to me.
I'm going to quit talking now.
Well, I've, I've heard Commissioner Potter mention many times that it'd be great to have a, a series on truth in energy, so to speak, which is getting to the heart of what you're talking about, and how coal can be...
Can I steal that slogan, Jay?
Sure.
I like that.
You can also steal a Coal Appreciation Day. Be happy at nighttime to disconnect somebody if you want to choose who. Not naming any states.
Well, Coal Appreciation Day, I, I was asked to emcee it the first time, but as I introduced Senator Hinkins as Senator Dinkins, I've never been asked back since, so.
I think the other thing in, in the energy stories is that, really, the story needs to be told about what, what wind and solar really provide to us. And, and I believe that renewable energies will become more and more efficient. But in their current state, and with their current subsidies that they receive from the federal government, on any given day, California produces more solar power than what they can consume. And thereby, every day, they offer to pay Rocky Mountain Power and other companies to take that power off their hands.
That excess.
That excess.
That cannot be stored.
So, the, the problem, going back to the baseload issue, is, is that that's great during the day, and when the wind's not blowing, and the sun's not shining, where do you get your power from?
You know, that's an interesting point, and it's a discussion that somebody even talked about natural gas that I had never considered before, and this was just in the last couple of months. There's not a, there's not a single power source that's available in the marketplace that is disruption-proof, because natural gas depends on pipelines. You have a disruption in a pipeline, natural gas plant is going to go down, and it will not be generating.
And it's controlled by a market that's very volatile.
And...
It has a history of being very volatile.
Right. And, and the clouds can come out, and the, and the winds can quit blowing. So, the only baseload that you can be guaranteed will run in any kind of catastrophic situation is coal, because every coal plant I've been by, I've seen at least a four or five-day supply of coal stacked up outside, if not longer. And, you know, when I, when I drive down I-15, I always see that transfer station for the IPP out there by Nephi, and I, I'm seeing mountains of coal come and go there all the time. And, and so, that's one of the arguments that I think could very well be made. Would you participate in this, if I can put this show together on truth and energy?
Sure, I always would.
Okay.
The other, the other thing, and Seth would love this one, but I think there's a great deal of knowledge and to be communicated in regards to governmental financing. Seth would like to be on that one, right? No, I'm sorry, I'm just volunteering. But I, I do believe, you know, especially as we enter into a, a tax, needing to, needing to pass a budget and needing to consider taxation, that that's something that has been touched on, and it would probably be your most boring episode ever, sorry Seth, but there is some real misunderstanding on, on how taxation works. And we've talked about centrally assessed and some of those other things, but it's, it's a big topic.
It took us, it took us three visits to centrally assess to finally find a way to explain it. But truth and taxation is an entirely different beast that probably...
Truth and taxation, and then those items that are required, meaning locally, we administrate certain things, but we are also being required to provide services, certain services to our community. And to differentiate those from those services that we do have some control over, in essence, would be very telling to the public.
Okay. You might get volunteered. Are, do you, you have tax hearings coming up?
We do. Matter of fact, that's a perfect lead-in. We have some flyers, and these are being advertised. There are some budget open houses being held on November 8th, here at the Administration Building, from 6 to 8. On the Monday, the 13th, it'll be out at the Event Center from 6 till 8. And then we have a public hearing, truth and taxation hearing, on the 14th, scheduled at 6 o'clock here in the Commission Chambers. So, we, we do want the public to come and be involved in those discussions, and so, yes.
Is there a possibility that we could put this show together by next Tuesday?
I don't know that that's possible, but...
I'll bring the, I'll bring the crew down here if you guys can pull it off. Because that would give us a chance to actually take this episode and, and talk about the importance and put it out before your meetings are over.
Well, we could, we can certainly talk about that.
Okay. I will leave that, I will leave that as kind of an open-ended thing.
Yeah, I was just going to say...
You want to step out in the hall after?
If you want me to play, it's not before Tuesday, no.
We have an election to take care of, too.
Oh, that's true.
National District 3.
By the way, you said it would be the most boring episode ever. Okay, voting machines, they thought that was going to be the most boring episode ever. And I will tell you, it came out really, really good.
I was about to say you were hitting below the belt. I think our voting machines are pretty cool.
Oh, how funny.
Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Going back to that flyer, we, we do have those available, and they're being distributed, so... We would, we would be glad to have you, anyone, take those and put them in distribution points, would be great. Okay? Thank you. What's that? Um, yes, there, we can, we can send it that way. Commissioners, if you would be open to it, I'd like to take items eight and nine together in regards to the southeastern Utah Health Department. And to do that, I'd like to invite Brady Bradford to come forward, if you would. As you know, Brady has been offered and appointed the Director of the Health Department, and we'll be ratifying that here shortly. But if you'd like to introduce yourself, I know you've presented here before, but if you'd like to present yourself and what this new role means for you, that would be very appropriate.
Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners. I have been in, I've been living in Carbon County and working at the Health Department for almost 12 years now. I started as essentially a contractor, working for the Department of Health, doing epidemiology work. That transitioned into environmental health and emergency preparedness activities as I left the state and, and started my employment with the Health Department eight years ago, as a district, and have been the Environmental Health Director there for the past seven years. This is an opportunity I've been working toward and looking forward to for a number of years, knowing that our workforce is, has been aging and transitioning. And knowing that there are, there's a lot of work to be done in public health in our communities as we, we regularly are ranked near the bottom of the barrel in the state of Utah in terms of health outcomes. And all of those aren't, outcomes are not necessarily directly related to public health. There's a lot of interplay between housing and access to healthcare, and partners that we need to continue to work with in order to improve our outcomes in, in this area, and that is Carbon, Emory, and Grand Counties. And I'm, I'm looking forward to that. One of the first opportunities that we need to, I need to finalize is rewriting aspects of the interlocal agreement between Carbon, Emory, and Grand Counties. That, and present parts of that, such as the makeup of the board in terms of numbers and who is recruited to that board, to each of those counties in a way that will satisfy the commissions of Carbon, Emory Counties and the Council of, of Grand County. As I have been reviewing ours and comparing it to the other interlocal agreements around the state, there are a lot of parts of that agreement which, which are just fine, and there are a few things that need to be updated and have come to light in the discussions that have taken place over the last month or so with, with the other counties. I expect to have a draft for the review of each county by Monday, and then certainly will take some time to review that and finalize the wording and language and approve that with the attorney, Christian, Christian Briner. I've been in touch with him as well. But we have, I mentioned a, a changing workforce. We've hired a number of people in, in the last few months, getting their training in order and making sure that our Health Department meets the minimum performance standard set forth by the state, and possibly, within the next five years, becoming an accredited Health Department is, are some of the goals that, that we're looking forward to. Any questions?
Thanks, I think that's a great introduction to, you know, who you are and where you're headed. Commissioners, one of those items that we had on to was to ratify the appointment of Braden Bradford as the Health Officer for the southern, southeastern Utah District Health Department. That's necessary, that even though the board, Health District Board makes a recommendation, it has to be ratified by all three county commissions for that to become effective at any point in time. So, I would take a motion in regards to that ratification.
So moved.
Second it. Have a motion, and a second, and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I know that, you're, you're fine. I know that the, the hiring process of, of replacing the Director for the last six months was one of, only one of many items that brought about this commission to withdraw from the Health Department with the hopes that we would be able to reconcile and make sure that public health went forward. And so, that's probably, part of that next item, that was item number eight, was discussion of possible terms for that new interlocal agreement. And Commissioner Mallor, you had some things that you wanted to bring up in regards to that?
Yes, as, as representatives from each county met, and also had some guidance provided from Cameron Mitchell, who's the Executive Director of the Association of Local Health Departments for the state of Utah, and Lloyd, who's, who's from, is it the Bear River Tri-County Health District, we, we did receive some, some advice and counsel. And part of that was, is that a, a new Director is also the Board's Executive Secretary. And so, Brady mentioned some of his first steps, as being ratified by each county governing body, is to then review, as our Executive Secretary, with the hosting county's legal council, which is our county's legal council, revisions and updating, updates made to the bylaws and the interlocal agreement. And assuring, taking examples from all the other interlocal agreements that exist throughout the state in county representation, and basically how we work together to make things happen. Some counties even have permanent positions, such as the hosting county's sheriff as a permanent position on their board. And we're reviewing a lot of options, yeah, surprise, sheriff. We're, we're, we're reviewing a lot of options and making sure that what we're doing is applicable. Not, not only that it's done and followed by other, other, other districts and Departments of Health, but that it's applicable to Carbon, Emory, and Grand County, and what will serve us best going forward. And Brady Bradford being ratified as the, not only as an interim Director, but as the Director, is a pivotal piece in making that go forward. And will be an individual that the Board goes to for advice and counsel in the future.
Commissioner Hope, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, until we have a, an actual draft of the, the agreement.
Part, part of, and we continue to have some questions on what, what would happen going forward. Not only did Carbon County withdraw, but also Emory County gave notice that they would. And so, that did bring an opportunity for some reconciliation with Grand County. We have not removed that, I'm not suggesting that we do. At this time, it would have to be an agenda item to remove that withdrawal. We have until the end of the year to do so. I made it very clear in the, the meeting where we went about that, that there were several concerns that I have that I don't feel that you've totally addressed, Commissioner Mallor. That is, is that the Board's function, that needs to be immediately addressed within, not only the interlocal agreement, but the bylaws. We need to make sure that they are following what is required of them. Administratively, we rely upon the Health Department personnel to take care of those things, but that they are a policy and a, and not an administrative board. Yes, they do have some oversight and some roles to play, but that inability to move things forward, dysfunctionality that I had mentioned before, is a, still a very much a big concern, which can be taken care of partially in that local, interlocal agreements. So, we'll be anxious to see how those things work out. The other thing in regards to the bylaws, that, again, it talks about the Board, that they need to be, they determine those general policies. I was happy to have reported it for the first time in a long time, that we actually talked about public health issues, and not just administrative, which is important. But if we don't take care of the people from a Health Department standpoint, then, you know, where do those other ideas really get to come into effect, that we know what, what the people need? So, bylaws, the two areas that I have some real concern about are, one, when will you meet? That's, I think right now, it's a critical time, probably going forward as we go into this next period, of how often do you meet? I'm not saying it has to be every month, I know it's required quarterly by the state, but it ought to be frequently. And the other thing is, is where those meetings are held. And I had said this in one of the Health Department meetings, that perhaps instead of going to Green River for those meetings, and nothing against Green River, but should those meetings be rotated through the respective county seat areas? I see that as an opportunity for more people to participate in the process than less. Yes, we can all drive to Green River, but if those meetings rotated between the three counties, then you've got personnel, you've got people, public, that may have input in these very public meetings, which are, in a lot of ways, isolated because of where they're being held, and perhaps the times that they're being held. So, that was one thing. The other item that you've already addressed, Commissioner Mallor, is, and particularly with Brady's comments, is the number of Board members that should be on that Board. I know there's been discussion of increasing currently, it's a nine-member Board with three from each of the counties. It's been talked about increasing that to an 11, or down to a seven. about increasing that to, um, an 11, or down to a seven. My personal opinion is that we should definitely look at the smaller number. Um, but of course, that needs to also be determined by, you know, a board looking at it and, and the communication. So I hope that, that those items in particular will be addressed real soon, so that we can, um, talk with Emery, talk with us, and, and see exactly where we're going. Because again, I'm, I'm happy that we have a director in place and it's been ratified, but there were still many other things that needed to take place. One thing, last thing that I would add to that is, is in the, the rules, the, the R380-40, which is the Health Department minimum performances, there's a section there that talks about what the Health Officer needs to ensure, and that's under Section 8, and it's, um, A through G, number of items. But, um, I think that as far as training of a new board and new board members, that we need to make sure that there's an understanding of what needs to happen with our, um, Health District Personnel, particularly the Health Director. So, those are things that, uh, need to definitely be looked at. That's all, all I had. Any other comments, commissioners?
Just a little, uh, clarification on, on where to meet and different things. Um, again, this needs to be coordinated with the Four Corners Behavioral Health, as currently they meet at the same location, at the same day, and have a lot of the same board members. Um, so far, conversations with them have been appealing to do just that. However, it was suggested, um, some medium, which I would like to voice with the two of you for future discussion purposes, they had mentioned that it might be, um, less of a, so, we definitely wanna meet in a location that is central to where the departments have offices, so that more participation from the public during these public meetings is accessible and available. Their, their question was whether or not we could do that during the summer months, when more people are able to get out and travel and get to these locations for these public meetings, whereas during some of the, uh, months when weather is, or could pose an issue, that they be held in Green River, uh, for the purpose of it being more of a central location and better, or improved driving conditions for those involved, which would still allow, if there are every other month meetings, six meetings a year, three meetings, one in each county, three other meetings in Green River. Um, that is not necessarily an idea that I am for or against, but one to communicate, um, that is being considered by the other counties.
For me, I don't know that it changes the travel plans much by holding it at either one of the three counties, um, versus Green River. Either everybody's driving those roads to Green River, or they're coming back to, to either Emery or, or Carbon. I don't know that it makes a difference.
It's...
Which direction the travel is, but it allows...
It's just an additional hour each way for some county, and it's not for all. So yes, there would be one county that would have an additional two hours to their total trip. Um, then the, uh, meetings for both the Health Department and Four Corners Behavioral Health, it just turns the day, um, into a little bit longer day. And, and again, I'm just voicing the opinions of those that have expressed them, not necessarily those of my own.
And, and the thing with that is that, if it rotates, the driving is going to eventually equal out, just as it would be for Greener. Right now, Emery County has the furthest drive, so...
Yep.
And going back to Commissioner Potter's thought was, if we're talking about public health, having the residents of Carbon County, having that meeting here allows them, if it's only three times a year, it allows them an opportunity, whereas most residents are not gonna drive to Green River for that meeting. Likewise, with Emery County, if they have a meeting in their county and Grand County, it allows the public, who should be at those meetings, an opportunity to show up and voice their opinions without having to drive the hour, which they wouldn't do.
Which, besides board members, it would be nice to have Carbon County citizens the opportunity, on two different occasions during the year, to show up to a public health meeting here in their own county.
Right.
So there's, there's still a lot of work to be done in regards to those items, but anything else, commissioners?
As far as the size of the board, my recommendation, not to exclude anybody, but it would be smaller is better, as far as coordinating all the schedules. Uh, smaller boards tend to function a little smoother.
So, uh, just explaining some of the rationale behind what they're looking for here. A smaller board would be two, two, and three. That would be two from Emery, two from Grand, and three from Carbon County. Um, if we were to do three, three, and five, that obviously allows a couple more voting positions for Carbon County, um, and it still allows Grand and Emery County to outvote Carbon, if we were to, um, all swing one direction and try to control the board. Um, the reason, some of the reasons are similar to Bear River, where one of the counties has five representatives, one of them has, I can't remember if it's two or three, Brady, three, and then one of them has one representative from that one smaller county. Um, that larger hosting county is able to provide two permanent position seats, one of which is the sheriff, and, uh, I believe they also have the ba- behavioral health director on their Health Department Board as a permanent position. For our community, where we would benefit is maybe having somebody from institutional health, such as Carbon Medical or the hospital, that could provide perhaps more on a community level, um, advice or viewpoint that would otherwise not be represented on the board during a normal, um, group setting. And that mayor, that, the, some of those things Brady is looking into, so that he can provide advice on what would make most sense. If an ongoing permanent position from a hosting county, such as Carbon County, um, you know, after maybe some future discussions with the sheriff and some other local people, it might be prudent to have a larger board size. Um, but then again, we would still accomplish much of the same thing by a smaller board as well. But just explaining why both of those are being considered.
The, um, and, and the, the concern I have with, uh, the larger board is, yes, you, you could still do that with the perma- with a permanent seat, um, if you had that, but we also need to be sure that, within the state laws, that we don't get the majority of the board in the medical field or...
Less than 50%.
...associated with that. So, you know, that would have to definitely be one of those considerations.
Which, uh, was why Brady's working with Cameron and other folks at the state, to make sure that, that all fits.
Either, either scenario still gives us, um, the extra votes, but it also allows the, the other two counties to have a majority if it's needed, which I think is good governance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Next item then, is we need to convene as the Carbon County Municipal Building Authority, and we'll need a motion for that.
Motion to convene as the Carbon County Municipal Building Authority.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. We'll turn the time over to Commissioner Hope, who chairs that.
Commissioners, we have one item of business, and that's approval of the minutes, or no, we have two items. We have approval of minutes. The minutes that we have are from the October 4th meeting. This was, uh, the change in application to put the, uh... I thought this was the fire truck meeting. Yes, it is.
It is.
Okay. To, to add the fire trucks to our CIB list.
I don't have any corrections in those minutes, as I reviewed them. Commissioner, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve those.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Second item on the Municipal Building Authority agenda is approval of conveyance of Southeast Utah Health Department building, um, Carbon County Tax Parcel Number 01-0315-000, from MBA to, from the, from the Municipal Building Authority to the Southeast Utah Health District.
And commissioners, this should have been done several years ago, after the, the MBA took over the, uh, the building in order to obtain a bond to pay for renovations. Uh, this was back in 1990. Uh, it was then paid for up through, payments were made on it through 2012, when payments were finally done in full, and it was just a matter of, uh, it escaped our checklist of something that we needed to do. So, it does need to be conveyed back now to the Health Department.
I'll make a motion to approve that, and that'll help clean up the records for the Health District also.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
A move that we reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
We need to convene as the Community Development Agency.
Yeah. So, you wanna...
Yes, I would, uh, move that we convene as Carbon County Community, Community Development Agency.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe you're the chair, the acting chair.
Thank you. Um, the item that we have, uh, before us is, uh, the consideration and possible approval of conveyance of personal property, three metal buildings, as part of the economic development incentive package to Innermark Steel. And we, commissioners, had held a public hearing in regards to this, uh, had tabled any action being taken on that until we had some clarification from the BLM in questions, in regards to questions as to what the status of those buildings are. Commissioner Hope, if you'd like to talk to that a little bit, that'd be great.
The BLM, uh, met with, uh, myself and approved through legal that the building will be stricken to the county, that they do not claim ownership in the building. However, i- in order for anybody to either use that building or to remove that building, they would need to then work through the BLM to use the property or go onto the property to remove the building. So, uh, everything is in place. I don't think we have the agreement written up. Um, so this will probably have to be tabled anyway, uh, until we can get the agreement written up.
Commissioner Mellor, do you know anything about the bonding on that? I think you had mentioned that before, as far as the reclamation bond goes.
There are some certain requirements, um, necessary there, depending on, with the BLM, what is required to put things back into a state that it can be used by private industry or used by somebody else. And a- again, those are conversations that Commissioner Hope's will have to, uh, get furthered, so that in this process, um, these buildings can be used, not only these buildings, but that land could perhaps be used by somebody else in the future. Um, so, without their documents, the legal documents being reviewed by our legal counsel, I don't know that we can move forward with any of that.
Christian, I'm, I'm really wondering if, really, because we have yet noticed that those buildings are the county's, if we could enter into a contract to move that forward based upon, um, Innermark Steel, working out those details as far as bonding, and also as far as, um, access to the property.
Sure.
And move this forward instead of bringing it back at another...
I think you could. I think you could approve the conveyance, um, subject to the contract having those terms, those terms being that they will work with BLM to arrange for the, for the actual physical removal. They'll get whatever permits they need from BLM and make any arrangements, and they'll take care of any reclamation that would otherwise be required of the county. And so, subject to those conditions, I think you could approve the conveyance tonight.
Also, the price needs to be included.
And the price needs to be put in there. Uh, and, uh, I think that was, is it the same price that was mentioned before? That we've discussed it?
We have not changed that or met.
Okay.
You know, in a, in a public meeting to discuss that, so...
Okay.
So, commissioners, I, I would entertain a motion to that effect. I think that it would be prudent to move it forward, if you're comfortable with that.
I am. I'll make a motion to approve the, how would I word that, Christian? Approve the conveyance of the building, subject to a contract with Innermark Steel?
Yes, I think that's sufficient. Subject to Innermark Steel agreeing to the terms of a contract that we will present to them.
So moved.
Seconded.
Second. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to reconvene as the Carbon County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Um, we would also like, on the agenda also has 11.1, which should be approval of minutes. The minutes from the Community Development Agency were approved with part of the, the commission minutes on September 20th, but since you're sitting as the, as the agency board right now, um, we'd like to have...
So they were already approved, that they were approved?
They were approved in the, along with the commission meetings, and that's where they'll be held, but since you're now meeting as a separate legal body, I'd like to ratify the approval of that, the agency's portion of those minutes.
Have, have they already been posted?
They've been posted, and they've been approved in this...
Okay.
In the September 20th minutes.
I'll make a motion to ratify the approval of the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
For what date? What was the date on those minutes?
September 20th.
September 20th.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to reconvene.
A move that we reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That really is the end of our agenda. If we could have a motion to dismiss.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.